And scene, guys on. All right. The Board of Education opened special meeting at 5:04 a.m. Roll call, please.
Wait, wait, wait.
Eight oh four, excuse me.
Five.
Good morning. Happy Friday. Good morning. Eight oh four a.m. Roll call, please.
Cleveland Johnson present.
Jesus again present.
Susan Smith present.
Ruth Self-Williams present.
Christian Johnson present.
Brandy Clark present.
Robert Verdi present.
Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Student Board Member, Christian Johnson.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Any person wishing to speak to items on the agenda only, C1 or C2, may do so at this time or when the item is addressed by the Board of Education. Any persons requesting to speak to items on the agenda only shall be allowed to speak three minutes. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on each agenda item to 21 minutes, Board by law 9323B, Section 5. Per Board by law 9323, twice a lot of time will be provided for a member of the public using a translator later. Claudia, do we have any comments?
No public comments.
Thank you. We're now moving on to C1, Discussion, Action on the Approval of the Superintendent's Search Process and Approval of Next Steps. The Board of Education will have a discussion on the Superintendent's Search Process and Approval of Next Steps may include the use of the Superintendent's Search Form. Do we have any comments? Would any of you like to speak to this? Mr. Hogan?
Yes, thank you, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
So, this is a, this is a very important decision that the Board needs to make moving forward with the continuity of the, the work of the, the school district as a whole. And we conducted a search, or the district conducted a search, and there was a lot of great information out of the search, uh, out of this, I'm sorry.
Survey.
The survey. The district conducted a survey, there was a lot of good information coming out of that. And, you know, we have said repeatedly here that the voice of the community is very important to us and also the voice of the student. At the last meeting, there was a comment from one of our students that, that we should include the student voice. And I wanna, I wanna note that because I think it is important somewhere in the process to have that student voice, and I'm not sure exactly, we need to discuss how. But at this point in time, I think it is important to move on with the process so that we can get closer to, to solidify who our next leader is going to be and at what, at what point in time. So, I'm just going to start, make a suggestion, and then I know, I know my colleagues have comments to make, and absolutely, I respect that. But I think it is important, again, based on the voice of the community, I think it is important that, that we consider all, all options open. And, you know, my inclination is to, to initiate a formal search process and go that direction to find the proper candidate. Now, I know Dr. Verdi's sitting here, he's, he's been our interim superintendent, and I appreciate your work, Dr. Verdi, in the last few months. And when I say that we should open the process is to, to, again, respect the voice and, and see what our many options are. Of course, being, being a Dr. Verdi, one of our options, definitely. So, it's open. And I think it is, it is important, I think it is a good process, it's a fair process, and it is a, a way to, 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 to do the, to find the right person for the position. So, that's my, my opening comment on that.
All right, so, are we just going around and everybody's saying anything, everything, whatever?
Please feel free.
All right, so, um, I think we have somebody already in-house that's been doing a great job these last six or seven months, and I think that when we talked about, you said about the voice of the community, I think the majority were in favor. It was a, it was close, but I think the majority were in favor of hiring somebody from within rather than looking outside, and I think that was kind of the direction we received from people, but it wasn't overwhelming, I don't think, either way. It wasn't like 75% said one way or the other. I think it was pretty evenly divided on whether we should go outside or hire from within. Even if we go outside for a search process, I think we still have good candidates within our district, you know, like Dr. Verdi, that, that we would encourage to apply, no matter which direction we go. I think that some people, both in the public and on the Board, wanna see what's out there, and, you know, I'm not saying that's wrong, I just, I just have my feelings that, you know, we have great people here in our district, I believe in promoting from within. I think that, um, you know, that, that, that's the direction we should go, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Johnson, because we kinda went out of order, I just wanna give you the opportunity to speak to this item.
Thank you. I, um, I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm always prepared to say something. I was just, I was harkening back the last few days. I was just telling Jesus that I had, I'm not, I am not an AM person, thank you for waking me, but I had two, I, I had two, um, Long Beach, eight o'clock in the morning. So, anyway, getting back to Marina Valley, I, um, I think, I think since I've been here, we've only, uh, no, we, we've never hired anybody from outside. When we hired Dr. White, uh, Dr. White, she was from outside, and I was brand new then. And I think that was a great hire. Well, she also had some people that, that came along with her. And, uh, one of those people is, is Dr. Verdi, and, well, he came, you know, just a couple of years right after it. But, I'm like, uh, I, I prefer to, to stay inside because, um, I worked for Frito-Lay for a long time. I saw us go outside, I saw us go inside. I saw the value of the inside much more than I saw the value of the outside. There's nothing wrong with the outside. I came from outside, I was surprised they hired me from outside, but they did. But, um, I think that we have done a pretty good job of filling in for, oh, Lord, I can't take this one. Hey, y'all don't see me in the morning, so somebody sees me, they know what to do.
The world's easy now, though.
Getting back to what I was saying, though, personally, I would like to, to hire from within. I have no qualms about going out, but if I think that a person is ready for a position, then I'm all in for that, and I'd much rather give it to someone that I know and I'm well aware of. The things that Dr. Verdi has gone through, he's, I'm sure he's taken notes, he's observed, he's learned, and I think he would, he'd be the person. Now, I'm also with the Board, I, I am not gonna go against what the majority of the folks say, whatever we decide, you know, I'll, I'll be there, but I'm just letting you guys know what my feelings are. Now, I didn't come here planned to give my own personal thoughts, but for those of mine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm going, now going to go to Student Board Member, Mr. Johnson, and I just wanna echo that. Mr. Johnson, Student Board Member, is the trustee and speaker of the student voice. He represents the students. We're fortunate enough to have a Student Board Member, and for those of you who don't think that there is a student voice here, there is, and the survey went out to everyone, including students. So, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. For me, I think that hiring in-house has its good and bad effects because, one, you have superintendents that are active and that students grow to love and trust, so when you have a superintendent like Dr. Verdi, you get attached, and students are really like, hey, that's my superintendent, they're proud. But from previous encounters, I do think it is nice for us to go out-house and look because all, the only thing that matters to me personally, I think, to students, is a superintendent that advocates for us and that also is looking for progression and not just staying in the past. So, that's my comments on it, and if you want, Mr. Hogan, other student voice, if you want a better survey, I think there's a meeting on May 1st with students, so if you are looking for a broader voice instead of just me and Eduardo, that can, we can make something happen like that.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Ms. Self-Williams.
Thank you. I've heard my colleagues, and I wanna thank you so much for your careful thoughts because this is a very important decision that we have to make for Moreno Valley Unified School District. It is about doing what's best for this district, it is about doing what's right for our children. So, the first thing that I want to say, for me, we did, we conducted a survey. It was very important, and we get feedback from all stakeholders, parents, staff, students, the community. And for me, number one, the voice of the community is real, really important. And for me, it's about regaining the trust of this public. We heard it said time and time again, as people came to the podium and they spoke, there are some concerns about trust. So, I feel that by going through an actual search, we have the opportunity to regain the trust of our public because we, their voices were heard. The second thing, the search allows all candidates to go through the rigor of the superintendency process, and it is a rigorous process. There's an application, there's an interview, there are district visitations, there are interviews of the community, of staff, of parents. Number three, the search motivates the applicants to do their homework in regards to the demographics of this district, the community, student achievement, community and family engagement, and to design a plan of action of how they're going to move this district in the right direction. Number four, and I'm gonna say this, Dr. Verdi, we wanna thank you for stepping in as the interim superintendent, and the one thing I wanna share with you, you will also have the opportunity to go through this process which would dispel any perception of favoritism or competency level. Because we, uh, we have a lot of faith in you, you stepped up, and you have done everything you can to keep communication open, to share with us, to also problem solve, because there have been daily as well, as well as weekly things that have come up, and you stepped up to do what is needed to, number one, keep our students safe, to connect with the community, with the parents, with staff, even during our difficult times of our budget dilemma as well as what's going on with negotiating contracts, raises, et cetera. So, I am in favor of doing whatever we can to amend the concern that we have about appointments. For me, there's two things that's important. Accountability and competency level. I'm very big on that. Being able to do the job, having the skill, skill set to do the job. So, I am definitely in favor of a superintendency search.
Thank you, Ms. Self-Williams. I wanna say, just really briefly, that Dr. Verdi has done an amazing job. We have been very lucky to have him at the helm as an interim superintendent. This is a no reflection of his ability to do the job or the job that he has done. He has been excellent, and we appreciate everything that he's done, and thank you. I wanna say personally, thank you. So, at this time, would someone like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's search process and next steps?
I'd like to make that motion, that we move forward with the superintendency search.
Can I get a second?
I'd like to second, second that motion.
Please call for the vote. Student Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Self-Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Clark? Aye, this motion has passed. Moving on to C2, the Board of Education approved, uh, discussion and action on the Approval of the Superintendent's Search Firms and Possible Selection of the Search Firm. The Board of Education, um, went through four superintendent search firm, firms and asked for proposals for Education Leadership Services, Hazard Young, Ateas Associates, Riverside County Office of Education, and the COSCA Group. Would you like to make a comment, Mr. Student Board Member Johnson?
Um, looking through it, I just, I just, the only thing I care about, once again, is just a group who's gonna find us a superintendent that fits our district and is gonna fit our demographic and what we have to offer. That's just my comment on that.
Thank you so much, sir. Mr. Johnson?
I have my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yes, thank you so much, President Clark. Number one, before I make, I get my comments into the, the different proposals, I want to thank staff, Claudia Argie and, and members of staff that put together this or went through the process of getting these proposals together for us so that we could have these options, you know, once we decided whether we're gonna go, go through a search process or an appointment. So, now we're at that step now, so I wanna say again, thank you for, for providing us with this information, which is, has been very helpful. I read these proposals, and, and I'm not gonna take too long, I'm just gonna point a couple of items that were important. I, I'm, I'm sure it's important for, for the entire Board and, and also for the community. Couple of items that I looked into very closely is, number one, the cost because we didn't, we didn't wanna incur a big, big expense in the process. And then, there's a couple of items that have been, over time, of great importance to this Board and to many community members, and I think that Ms., Ms., Ms. Self-Williams made a reference to, to, to one of those. She mentioned trust. I wanna say, uh, to, 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 to regain the trust or to continue having the trust, it is important to observe items such as confidentiality, which is a big, big item for, for this Board, and I, I believe for every Board in any organization, especially here and with the community, confidentiality is critical, and also for the protection of staff members, protection of students, protection of community members, et cetera, et cetera. The other, the other item, at the same time, while we're looking at the confidentiality, which is critical, the opposite, transparency. Transparency is also a big factor in the process, in this particular process, and that's why we're here today, being transparent to the community, we're going through this process. So, when I look at these, at these proposals, considering the price, the, the cost, considering transparency, considering confidentiality, and several other items, and also, I like, uh, looking at the timelines because we've been in this process or we have been with the interim superintendent, and again, thank you, Dr. Verdi, for your service. We have been in this, in this, uh, uh, status for the last few months, and I think it is important to have a timeline in front of us so that we can know, and also the community needs to know, where, where we're going and where we're going to get where we want to get. So, um, so, to summarize my comments, I, I read all this, and I'm, I'm ready to make a motion whenever, whenever Ms. Clark is, is ready for that, for take that motion. I'm not gonna make it yet until, of course, my colleagues have additional comments, and then I'll make the motion at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Well, I could make a motion too, but...
Whenever I'm allowed to make a motion, I'm ready to do it.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Well, I, I think that was a premature comment because nobody else has talked about what they want, and all of a sudden, you're ready to make a motion, but, you know?
I'm not making it until everybody makes a comment.
I think he's, he's saying that he knows who he thinks he wants.
I know who I think I want, too.
Sounds good. Let's hear it, Ms. Smith.
All right. Number one, HYA, they are extremely expensive, they're gonna charge, their base fee is 20% of the superintendent's salary, plus, uh, they have additional add-ons, they could easily reach, uh, close to, I think, $100,000 if we hired them. Plus, in my opinion, they are tainted because of their search in Temecula where a member of their own firm was, ended up being hired as a superintendent. I don't think that was, uh, I don't think you hire somebody from within your own firm, you charge all this money to the district, and then you hire somebody, somebody's hired that already works for you. It seems like that's a huge conflict of interest, at least as far as I can tell. Also, I understand that in that hiring, not all the Board members were even consulted, uh, somebody was hired that, some of the Board members hadn't even met. So, uh, this is why I am firmly against, um, HYA.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you saying that the Board members weren't consulted, that how did they vote?
I am saying that some of the Board members, a majority of the Board members were consulted, but not all of them were consulted.
Don't they have to vote?
Yes, and they did vote, they voted in public, just like we, we will vote in public. They did vote, yes.
But they never, you're saying?
They voted, it was a 3-2 vote, I believe.
But I guess my question is, you said some of the Board members didn't know?
They had met, not, uh, met the person that they hired prior to being asked to vote.
Gotcha, understood. I just wanted clarity.
Yes. And that was just some input I got from one of the Board members who possibly didn't want that public, but okay, sorry. So, then I'm looking at these other people, um, you know, I looked at this one from Riverside County Office of Education. It is definitely the least expensive option, but I felt like it was kind of superficial in many ways and didn't go into the depth maybe, um, that we want. So, for that reason, hey, I feel like I'm a shark tank, for that reason, they're out. So, now...
Good morning.
So, now I'm looking at the other two, both of these, COSCA Group and ELS, I thought gave good proposals. The price was medium for both of them. Both of them, I believe, said that they would continue to support, uh, the superintendent for a year. Let me see, that was on page 10 of this one. Yeah, it said, um, maybe it wasn't on the first...
COSCA Group is page 17.
Yeah, anyway, both of them said that they would give some support, uh, ongoing to the new superintendent, uh, that we hired. Both of them had a timeline that I brought a new superintendent onboard, uh, by July 1st, which I think is also our timeline. So, for that reason, I felt, uh, both of these were good. My personal preference was, uh, for ELS, but, uh, I could go with either of those happily. Well, not happily, you know, but whatever. Okay, so, moving on, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Self-Williams?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Smith gave a, a synopsis of the four firms, and I would just like to say that, uh, looking at the, um, the proposals, what's, what stands out is the survey analysis. Taking into account the survey, uh, that, one, has already been done, but number two, going through the implementation of another survey. In other words, meetings, getting face-to-face, uh, feedback from the community. The other thing is about developing a timeline, there's a process for that, from the beginning to the end so that we do have someone in place by the start of the 24, 25 school year, July 1st. The other thing that's really, really important is the coaching, the coaching and support. Because with a superintendency, there's always a transition from your former position to a new position. And there's a lot that has to be done, looking at the, um, analysis of next steps. What is currently going on, what needs to happen to transition to the momentum of improvement? So, that requires steadfast, um, observation, interviewing, looking at data, visitations of all sites, talking with people, and coming up with next steps. So, I'm really, really glad to see that there is coaching in, uh, that's being offered and support for the new superintendent, and the last thing is the cost. So, for me, uh, as Mrs. Smith said, the top two, COSCA Group and ELS, I'm in favor of moving forward with ELS, the experts in the field, partners in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Self-Williams. I do wanna share and point out that the fee is, uh, great for ELS, and there are no additional costs or hidden fees, and they do provide coaching, but they're optional services, so if we get candidates that are outside the region, I want to make sure the Board is aware that there are costs associated with bringing those, um, members to us, to interview, okay?
I, uh, question of clarity. The, for the firm to travel, to go and visit, uh, for district interviews, is that what you're saying?
Travel for interviews, candidates will submit the expense directly to the district.
Yeah.
The candidates. That's on page 10 of the ELS proposal. Just wanna make sure you understand.
I'd like to hire locally.
But we may hire locally, but if there's a candidate out there that needs to travel to us, we still have to submit, pay for those costs, I just wanna make sure we're all aware.
For the, for the search firm, not for the candidate?
No, the candidate. Um, listen to what I'm saying. If the Board chooses to reimburse candidates for travel for interviews, candidates will submit the expense directly to the district for reimbursement.
So, Ma- Madam President, I think it's important you get clarification from this firm because if you're looking at reimbursement, what would make sense, that reimbursement would be if this person is hired, not because you are traveling just for an interview.
This...
We need clarity.
That we have clarity. It says, if the Board, who, we are the Board, okay? So, I'm asking, what are we going to do? What do you think we should do if we were to go to ELS? There is a, potentially additional cost.
What page is that on?
Ten. And if the Board chooses to reimburse candidates for travel, for interviews, candidates will submit the expenses directly to the district for reimbursement. And I am okay with these, um, this cost, I wanna ensure that we all are.
I am not. If the Board chooses to reimburse candidates, it could be 15, 20 candidates. I am not for reimbursing someone who's applying for a position. And that needs to be, uh, said by the search firm upfront. You're willing to apply for this position, the onus is on you to travel to go to that interview. I do not agree with reimbursing candidates, and they may not even be the viable candidate, absolutely not.
I don't think we should reimburse people for travel either, but then I think we should hire somebody from Southern California, so... I'm now looking for somebody from New York.
Well, um, number one, I'm hoping that by the time of the interview, we don't have 20 candidates, we only have one or two. Number one. And number two, um, I think if I'm interested in a, in a position anywhere, I would be willing to pay my own travel to go for that interview. So, whereas I'm not opposed to the reimbursement, I don't think that we should reimburse the candidates for coming to an interview if that is the case. So, so, I'm opposed to reimbursement.
Thank you so much. Mr. Johnson?
I, I'm opposed to paying...
I, I'm opposed to paying anything like that, period.
Fantastic.
And, and just to clarify, and, and thank you, thank you, Ms. Clark, for bringing this item, because it says clearly here, if the board chooses. So, it's our, it's our choice to reimburse or not reimburse. So, I, I don't think we should, so that's.
We could just tell them upfront, we don't want to reimburse that.
If you're interested, you pay your own, your own profit.
I appreciate you. Mr. Student Board Member Johnson?
I think it's fine. I mean, but I also feel like if you're passionate about the position and you really wanna help and you really wanna make a difference, I mean, you, I would just come. With my job interviews, I didn't ask for my outreach back, so I would just go through the interview.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we are ready for a motion.
Okay. Can I make a motion at this point, Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir.
So, I move that we engage in a search process with Education Leadership Services firm.
Can I get a second, please?
I second it.
Please call for the vote. Student Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Self-Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Clark? Nay. This motion has passed, five, one. With no further business to come before the Board of Education, the special session meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five AM.